I have officially called this meeting of the Godly Independent School District Trustees to order at 6:00 PM. This meeting's been duly called and noted, the meeting's been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. We have a form of members present, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Bradshaw to walk through that education.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've brought us, for these people here that are gathered here to work, to make decisions for what is best for the students in our community. And thank you for the students and the parents that are here that they care about their education, they care about their growth, dear Lord. And God, I ask that you bless this meeting and help all decisions be made with your wisdom. And God, we're most grateful for your son, Jesus Christ, the sacrifice that he made for us. In Christ, amen and a break. Amen. Thank you.
So just for the record, unfortunately, Mr. Stevenson got called away for work at the last minute, but he has called in on our TV here next to us. Ms. Abbott is watching her daughter play at our playoff, girls' basketball playoff game, and Mr. McFarland is watching his granddaughter play at her basketball playoff game. So we hate that they couldn't be here, but we know the family comes first, so we just want to let everyone know and also say hello to Mr. Stevenson there on the TV.
Next, we'll move into recognition, and first one, CTE Education Week. Who's next?
Good evening, Dr. Dearwood President and Board Members. Thank you for allowing us this platform to celebrate our students. A fun fact about me, February is my favorite month. It's not because it's Valentine's Day, don't tell my husband, he gives great gifts, but I love February because it is Career and Technical Education Month. And if you're going to give me a platform to celebrate and shout about the amazing things our students are doing, then I'm taking full advantage of that. It is National Month for CTE, and that just means that we celebrate students far and wide as far as our profession and preparing the workforce for this next generation that's coming out. Just a few highlights that have happened just in the last two, two and a half weeks, because if I listed all of the amazing things our students have done, then we would be here for a really long time. So for the sake of time, we signed an official memorandum of understanding with Freedom Physical Therapy enacted, so we're going to need to send four interns to them next year. We'll hold full interviews in the late spring with our junior class and have them ready to go as soon as school starts next year. We also had students apply for internships with the Cleveland Railroad this week, so we hope to have media, photography, AV students working with them over the summer. We have our CTE poster contest winners here tonight, so I'm excited to celebrate how we facilitate thought and conversation for kiddos as young as pre-K in thinking about what they want to be when they grow up. We have our film festival currently going on, our films are due before spring break, and we'll celebrate those winners in April, where students can enter in animation, public service announcements, four different categories and five different age groups. So really talking pre-K to professional as far as exposing students to different careers. We had Johnson County Crime Stoppers here last week filming a commercial for an anti-vaping campaign and raising awareness about what Johnson County Crime Stoppers do. Our AV kids got to go behind the scenes and actually participate and use the equipment that they brought here as a professional company right here on our campus. Of course, our Ag students are always successful, they just finished Fort Worth Stock Show and Radio, they had Met kids just came back from San Angelo with ribbons. I could stand up here and go on and on and on, but it really is quite an accomplishment to see all of the great things that our students do in current technical education right here in Godly ISD. Of course, that doesn't happen without the amazing support and dedication of our CTE teachers. And just like some of our board members are called away for special events, not a lot of them are also, but we do have a couple of teachers here that I recognize. I saw Ms. Cook here, she teaches audio/video graphic design, career prep, she's a master of all trades. Mr. Wallace here, he's done amazing things with our robotics team. Did anybody else sneak in? Just a small sampling of what dedicated educators we have in preparing kids for the workforce. Tonight on the consent agenda, we do have a resolution for the district school to pass to declare February CTE Month here inside of Godly ISD. I'm going to go ahead and read that resolution now, so that you can pass it on consent later. So Career Technical Education Month Resolution, whereas February 1st through the 28th, 2023 has been designated Career Technical Education Month, to honor students who have chosen to pursue career and technical education. And whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true future readiness. And whereas students in current technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And whereas career and technical education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enable them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increased challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields. And whereas career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas career and technical education programs ensure that employers have access to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is strong and competitive economy. Now, therefore, I'm Mr. Luke Kitterick, school board president of Godly Independent School District, due for playing February 1st through the 28th, 2023, as Career Technical Education Month. And Godly ISD urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their future individual skills and productivity. So thank you from the Godly ISD students and teachers for supporting them and chasing their dreams and chasing future careers as they explore what best meets their needs as individuals. Thank you for that. The second item on the recognition agenda tonight is our poster contest winners. So we held a poster contest for our kiddos pre-K to 7th grade. Every student was given the prompt Imagine Me ads. And before I call the students up here, I want to say thank you to our principals, assistant principals, and our STEM facilitators, because they were incredibly important in facilitating this conversation at the elementary level. It's really just to start a conversation and to start the thought process around what do I want to be when I grow up, what does this look like, what does this career really mean? We know that they're not probably going to all follow through with what they presented to us tonight, but we're hopeful that the conversation has at least started for them. Each campus selected their top three winners for elementary, middle, 6th grade, middle school selected their top 10 winners, and then a district-level committee selected the winner and an honorable mention across all campuses for each grade. So I'm proud to present these students to you, and I will call them up, and we have their poster on the presentation. So first up is Jackson Patterson. Jackson is from RB Godly Elementary, and he wants to be a police officer. Next up is Asha Keenan Wa, she's from RB Godly, and she wants to be a chef. I want to eat some of your food one day. Can you do that? Our kindergarten winner is Sloane Tompkins from Legacy, and Sloane wants to be a doctor. Our kindergarten honorable mention is Monroe Mitchell, and Monroe wants to be a policewoman, not a policeman, a policewoman. Our first grade winner is Lauren Story, Lauren is from Legacy, and she wants to be a paleontologist, and I had to work really hard and practice that word. She can fall apart. Our honorable mention from first grade is Hilton Mayberry. First grade really put me to the test, because he wants to be a conservationist, which is good work. Congratulations, Jackson. Our second grade winner is Ezekiel Rodriguez. ZQ, he wants to be an architect. He's a resident of the school from Grace and maybe he can help us under our schools. Honorable mention for second grade is Ryan Ames. Ryan, can you, Ryan's not here, can you flip to his? He wanted to be a Secret Service agent and protect the president. Third grade winner was Thayer Rose. Thayer wants to be a photographer, and I loved her drawing because you use perspective, which is a word for photography, when you took a, drew yourself from the back. Third grade honorable mention is Alexis Perrin. Alexis wanted to be an astronomer, studying star. Fourth grade winner is Emily Cable. Emily wants to be a marine biologist and swim with all the sharks. Fourth grade honorable mention is Bexley Johnson. Bexley wants to be an astron-
Astronaut.
Astronaut, thank you. First place for fifth grade is Piper Sophie. Piper wants to be an artist. Congratulations, Piper. Honorable mention for fifth grade is Keegan Shelton. Keegan wants to be a demolitionist. There you go. Sixth grade winner is Mercedes Mousique. Mercedes wants to be an artist. And first place for 7th grade is Leslie Rodriguez. Leslie wants to be a NASA engineer. And then 7th grade honorable mention is Wana Lawde. He wants to be a race car driver. Congratulations. So please help me in congratulating this amazing group of students who imagine themselves in all kinds of future careers. We are so impressed with your art skills and your ambition, and we can't wait to see
All right, next we'll move into Stateful Communications with S and P.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Clark with Saiful Pontekas Client Executive. Real quick, I'll just give a quick update on Pleasant View Elementary, where we stand, I do not have a presentation for that right now, but just a quick update, and Principal Black, I think you're here, if you wanted to chime in during this. But right now, we're actively wrapping up punch list there. Looks like we've had a little bit of break in the weather, so you'll see benches, playground, vinylized turf going in, in the courtyard over the next week or so. And right now, punch list, we're approximately 80% complete, whenever I checked earlier today. Some of those items are long-lived materials that we're still waiting on, right now we've got a handle on that. The latest update on the marquee sign, Dr. Beer, is they've been able to push that up two weeks, so we're expecting that mid-March now to hit instead of early April. And so, really, that's all I have on the elementary school, if y'all have any questions. Okay, well, I'm representing the high school, Phase 2, CTE and Arena additions tonight as well. So from the last board meeting, we've had about three weeks, and one of those weeks was completely iced over. So you're not going to see too much, but I'll kind of walk you through what we're going through here. I didn't include the January update on the CTE addition, but right now, you can see, basically, we've poured the latter half of the, put to the left of your screen, basically all that concrete is down now, on the second work coming up with it. Could you go to the next one, please, real quick? Here's where you're going to see some changes. So from January to February, we have the fireproofing in, you'll see a lot more NEP overhead going in, you can see some ductwork in there, and a lot more hangers and some piping. And then, if you could switch to the next one, please. So this is what I wanted to hit on here. Not much has changed from January to February on the arena due to weather, but what we are doing is we're completely resequencing and kind of getting outside the box right now with the arena. Due to the wet weather, we haven't been able to make our concrete pores, and so it needs to dry out to get the suspended slab, the void boxes underneath for your structural slab in. But what we've done is we're bringing in steel now. So you will see, basically, without having the concrete pores done, we're going to start standing steel out there. We have our piers in, we can start going vertical with it, and once we get a dry spell, we can keep on making the slab pores and going through, and we'll just have a little leave out for the concrete trucks, pumps, et cetera, to get in there and finish up the slab pores. So that's one way, we, I was in the meeting for about three hours today on this, and that's one way we're going to make up time and pull that back, and we're not going to be really driven by weather right now. And so, that's one way, because I think we've got rain coming in about 2:00 AM tonight, and so, but you'll see steel going up in the next week and a half. And I think that may be it right now. So, yes, any questions on the high school? In person or virtually? Awesome, thank y'all. Next we'll have Reader Construction.
Good evening. Jeff Stevens with Reader Construction, here to talk about the high school Phase 3, the Fine Arts Edition. Kind of same struggles that Ryan was talking about, is the weather for the last three weeks. We have not been able to accomplish a lot on the building pad or the fields just due to the weather. We've been completely rained out, it's rained at least two days every week since we last made. So if you look at the presentation, we did complete the exterior demo, we had art surface to work on there. But that photo that you see right now was taken from Wednesday, and you can see how wet everything was. Where we're at now, we're not too far behind from the original baseline schedule. We're supposed to start drilling piers today, as of right now, we've got a period coming on Thursday to start drilling. So we're not, we're not too far behind, and it looks like the weather's going to keep up a little bit just a little bit. On the fields, we've got the retainers, the small retaining wall, it's scheduled to start next Monday until Tuesday, and then the utilities, we've got to wait for, we've got some storm drainage going, we've got to wait for a little bit more drying there. So, we're taking along, we're going to take advantage of the weather and just see how much we'll be accomplished. If you guys have any questions? Thank y'all. Thank you. Oh, sorry, created.
Sid, are you working on Saturday and Sunday to make up weather time?
We are now, and we will. There was no point in it over the last three weeks, just because it never dried out. From, I think, the Tuesday after, after the last board meeting, we got two or three inches of rain that day, and it just hasn't let up since. But yes, we will, we will be working as much as we can just to take advantage of the drought weather. We've got a little rain coming, coming in tonight, but we got everything dried out good enough to kind of smooth off the side a little bit, so hope we're not retaining water on the building pad with the rain today. Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll move into the public participation. At this time, we extend the opportunity for the public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. We have one person wishing to address the board. Public participation provides the general public the opportunity to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Persons attending the meeting and wishing to participate in public forum must complete a, sign a form and submit the form to the board secretary prior to the meeting being convened. Each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation. Personal attacks on district employees or students will not be allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect to civility and maintain a calm, supportive Upon the expiration of the three minutes, there's not a next person, so please note the Open Meeting Act does not require the board to respond to any comments or complaints from a member of the public regarding an agenda item. We will now begin the public forum. And we have Nova Holsen. Ms. Goodlow will keep your time, and she will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm speaking on item 7E regarding the bond. I am a resident of Godly, just like all of us who pay exorbitant amount of property taxes, and I am very concerned about a potential bond. More money is obviously not the solution. GSD is spending greater than 300% more per student than the state average, and what has that bought us? Only 39% of students are reading grade levels overall. Math and social studies are 35% and 33% respectively. Athletic expenditures must take a backseat until education-related scores are considerably improved. I personally grew up in a Midwest town of approximately 120,000 population with three highs, three major high schools. All of our major athletic events shared one stadium in town. We managed to survive and do just fine. We need better use of spaces, like this open area here that doesn't seem to support any sort of educational opportunities. Until we make better use of the space we already have, I do not support any new expenditures. Other than Huckabee, what other proposals have we heard? I was here last month, I didn't see anything from anyone else. Are there any alternative proposals that are more fiscally conservative? Godly's ISD rate, tax rate, is the 11th highest in the state. I want to let that sink in. 11th highest. Consider the population of other cities, 11th highest. We need, we need to find ways to reduce our property taxes, especially since the housing market, hence growth, has cooled considerably. It is irresponsible to ask your, ask your current tax base to fund a bond of this magnitude. It may very well crush the 37% of economically disadvantaged families currently in our district. Many of them can't even afford to put food on the table. We need responsible, conservative spending that clearly shows education is valued over bells and whistles, useless open areas, or expensive toys, just to name a few. If taxpayers have been forced to tighten their belts and watch their budgets and reduce their spending and consider priorities due to a tough economy we're currently in, then our educational institutions should as well, especially when you are spending our money.
Super gen reports.
Okay, we're at 2812, it's not working. 2812, I believe, which is down just a few from last month, but still up 184 for the entire year. Go to the next one. So we're down three from last month, with 47 from the first day of school, 143 from the last day of school last year. Or from, I'm sorry, from the first day, very first day of school. And here's attendance, pumping up just a little bit, 94, and we're still working on Nikki Nix is going to come talk to us about CTE raining, unless there's any questions for me on demographics. She disappeared. So we've had a lot of discussion about our CTE center, you see going up over there on the west side, about over 40 classrooms and marketing spaces in that center, over 40, yes, sir. And Nikki's going to talk to us about the raining, so we've had a lot of conversation about that, and we want to bring it to you here as well, correct, Nikki?
So one of our hopes is to rain or instantly name the CTE experience that students have as they come through our doors. There are several reasons for this, I think you can go to the next slide. One of the main goals of the new name is to house student enterprises or student-run businesses. We have one currently in the school store that is open to our students during the school day at various times for them to come in and purchase spiritware, snacks, or different pieces. As we grow our CTE programs, the hope is to have a floral shop, to have a print shop where our local realtors can come in and import flyers or different pamphlets and paraphernalia that they need to hand out to their customers. The vision is to have photography students who can pick up jobs and do work for local realtors or businesses who need photography services provided to them. That we have a computer repair shop that isn't just repairing computers, our current district, it is also repairing computers for our community and our, our It is also repairing computers for our community and our stakeholders here inside of Godly. To keep in industry standard with all of that, all of those businesses have names. You go to the store, you know the name of the store. We want our student enterprises to have names just like that, so that it's industry, keeping with industry standard. You're going to the Godly Print Shop. You're going to the Godly Floral Shop. But we want it to mean something. Once we recognize it, we'll stand out amongst the other businesses in our community and provide a way for our local parents, our local other businesses, our community to say, oh, that's the student ran store, that's the student ran floral design shop, that's the student ran print shop. So that they know they're working with students and providing that role-oriented experience to our kids here in Godly. There are some other schools that do something similar to this. Forney has the Opportunity Center. They call it the OC, so that's recognizable. I'm not sure they've branded their student enterprises quite to the depth that I hope we can here in Godly. Rosco ISD brands theirs with edgy, so they edgy make it in the maker space. They edgy weld it in their welding shop. But you can see how it catches on as a theme there. Irving ISD has some mature studies. Grand Prairie is located on Highway sixty-one, one sixty-one, so theirs are all one sixty-one bistro, one sixty-one catering, one sixty-one bakery, one sixty-one fast ladies where people go get their oil change. So there are other, are other schools doing what we're doing, but you can see even Grand Prairie, their logos are not consistent across the student enterprises. Our hope here is that we brand our businesses within the Godly logo, within the Godly colors, within the Godly brand that is already out there, that it's distinctly recognizable as a student ran enterprise, where we can partner with the community in that way. We wanted to bring this to you tonight as information. Dr. Dear and Mr. Mutter and I have met and talked about pulling together the naming committee to follow CW Local as the naming policy, even though this really is a brand and not a true name of what a building or facility is gonna be. We still want to recognize that process. We will meet with the naming committee between now and March, hopefully to present a branding recommendation to you as the board at the March board meeting, and then for you to vote on in April for approval of that brand for our student enterprises, our CTE name, our CTE experience as a whole. Any questions?
When you're talking about branding, we'll be approving a name as well for the CTE center and hopefully those will go hand in hand.
The goal of the is. I still see that as a part of the high school. But when we have students who want to go to that wings, just like you would say you go to the arena, I hope there's a name that we can say you go to the, and that is the CTE wing.
Any Johnson County schools branding?
Not that I'm aware of. I know that they do have some enterprises that interact with the community, but as far as having a brand like this that makes them recognizable and industry standard, I'm not aware of any inside of Johnson County that does it.
Next, Mr. Card will come up and we're gonna talk a little bit more about Stephen, Pillars Two, Four, and Six.
All right. Well, good evening. We're back with our Community-Based Accountability System update for this quarter. We are reporting, the last time we came to you, we have fully developed Pillars One, Three, Five, and Seven signaled, and now we have developed the key questions and the benefits for Two, Four, and Six. And now we're back to signal on, on Pillars Two, Four, and Six. So, just for, for everybody's reference, the color codes, purple, we like purple, so purple means we're doing the, we're gonna maintain, right? So, we're gonna keep going. Green is a continue, but consider a change. Yellow is a minor change that is currently in progress. And then red, large changes are in progress. You'll also see the OT listed on there, meaning that those changes are on track. And so, adjustments, AN is adjustments needed, and then EA is effect achieved. So currently, we're still working on it. We're not, we're not making any further adjustments to those changes that we're making. We are on track. So, it's difficult to see. So, the benefits, Pillar Two is student readiness. So readiness for the future, lifelong learning habits, thinking ahead, and taking ownership, and be accountable. Pillar Four, community engagement and partnerships. We want the community as partners, parents as partners, students are engaged citizens. And then finally, Pillar Six, fiscal and operational systems, hiring effective personnel, stakeholder understanding, and aligned resources. These are the benefits that we have, we have identified within each of these pillars. So, the principals have given their, their signaling, and so this is the district page. So again, just as a reminder, our timeline will be August will be our full community report. April, our intention is to have, I guess, I've been calling it an appetizer. It's gonna be our first kind of look at it and to come, come to you guys with a full accounting of all seven pillars, along with some information. And our intent there is to have a flyer that will, that will go out at that time. And so then between then and now, we're coming to you with signaling on where we, where we currently are. So, I've got the principals lined up and ready to go. So, I wanted them just to come and talk to you about their signaling and what they're working on. So, in no particular order. Mr. Flag, you wanna go first?
Howdy, guys. So, this is the biggest high school is working on right now as far as signaling goes. One of the things that we have talked a lot about with Ms. Nix coming on board and our career and technical education programming is really making sure kids are ready for what happens after graduation. Graduation is a milestone in their life, but it shouldn't be the highest point in their life. There's lots of things to do after graduation, and our goal is not to just get them graduated, but ready for the next steps, whatever those are, whether that's college, or career, or military, or things like that. So we have invested in a program called School Links. Our major change is starting now. We started at January twenty-third. We do have, we're gonna get a little bit of that in there. The kid's working with it and then put it out to parents so parents can see it. One of the really cool things about this is parents can claim their children on this program and then follow their child as they go through it. It is a one-hundred percent career prep program is really what it is. It gives kids information of how to find careers they might want to do and then how to get to said career. If it's college, then here's all the colleges that offer certificates for the kid to do that. And then here's all the scholarships that that college offers or scholarships across the country the kids can apply for to help pay for that education. If it's not something else like that, then it's just how do you get into the workforce and start right away? It has been a massive undertaking. Ms. Nix has led most of the lead work on meeting and getting it set up and doing the data part behind the scenes, but the kids are doing it every Monday in Wildcat Business for thirty minutes. They started tracking on it. On our first day, we did it January twenty-third. We had ninety-seven percent engagement across the campus. So all the kids got on and they started working with it. It was new. It was neat. Then we had ice on the next Monday, and so after that, they're kinda like, do we have to? Yes, you're still gonna do it on Monday. So Mondays are protected. But we do, I do know one story of like one senior right now. I know where the senior is a little late, but she is already about five weeks ahead in the course, trying to figure out what she wants to do before she graduates, because she's one kid that may not have known what was next. So it's really pressing for her, so we really hope this makes a difference for her. On the other pillars, things are ready for a change, but this is such a massive change we're doing as where most of our attention is focused. So, any questions for the high school? Thanks.
Good evening. Our first major change in this, the middle school is grade six through eight, so that's, that's why Ms. Williams is up here as well. Our, our first change, you see, is the benefit of thinking ahead. So, as it starts the school year, we realized that middle school students need help thinking ahead from year to year, Monday to Tuesday, second period to third period. So, we provided them planners and we worked with teachers and students to try to be more intentional with planning out their day-to-day activities. So that's the main, minor change there. And Pillar Six, we have higher effective personnel as a benefit. And after a training this past summer, we've realized that there's a whole new generation of people that are coming into the workforce that like things just a little different. So we're talking about, you know, putting the middle school out there on social media and how, how we're able to attract, but not only attract, but retain, teachers that come in and just some of the processes that we go through once they get hired from, you know, onboarding processes, things like that. The major change there is the stakeholder understanding. So, to what degree do we support stakeholder understanding of system effectiveness? When I read that, the only thing I could think about was CBAS, is all of this. And to me, that is a major change that we're doing. There's a lot of work that goes into it. There's a lot of time that goes into it. So that's why that's a major change for the middle school. And then finally, with the aligned resources, looking at professional development that's available, the allocation of resources, making sure we're intentional with what professional development specifically is out there, who we're sending, why we're sending them, and the benefits that we can reap from that. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm gonna start off for the elementary talks, talking about Pillar Two. As you can see on the chart, we don't have anything indicated for a major change in Pillar Two. I don't mind you to think that we took that decision lightly. That's something that we all three really wrestle with a lot. It's hard for us to not mark change everywhere, because of course we can see points of improvement in everything that we do. But one thing that we've learned is that we really have to be intentional with our change and be focused and really focus on twenty percent of the time if it's gonna be effective and meaningful change. So you won't see any major changes for us on this pillar, but I do want you to know some, some of the things that are in the works behind the, behind the scenes, because we are considering a change coming up. So, one of the things that we have started doing, all of us, is starting conversations with Nikki Nix and leaning on her to kind of help guide us in the, in the area of helping elementary students be future-ready. It can be a little complicated, like you, you saw with the drawings. They are dreaming and thinking about all the things they want to do. And so how do we guide that for a five-year-old? So she's helped us start to implement that within our, our scene classes, and she's come and talked to our teachers about implementing those within lessons in the classroom. So I can tell you, for example, on my campus, my kindergarten teacher is committed to implementing these types of lessons at least once a month to start kind of easing into having those within the classroom. So it's already happening as a change. It's just not a major change that we're focusing on right now, but it, it is in the works, so a change is coming. We also talked about having a tentative list of people that we can call, career people that we could call to come to our campuses when we are having different topics of conversation. For example, when we're learning about animals that, that could come and talk to our school, or a dentist, or an auto mechanic, or whatever it is, somebody that specializes in things that we're talking about, that we could all pull from as a resource to bring those, those people onto our campus. So those are some things that we are doing to kind of focus on two-point-one, two-point-two, and two-point-three. And two-point-four, we chose to maintain there and, and not consider a change just yet. So that is asking, do we support students to always do their best? I think at, at the elementary school, that is a constant. It's the heartbeat of, of what you're doing every day within the classroom, within your school. Some concrete examples of what we're doing. One thing that we do to help students have ownership of what they're doing is we display their, their work, their writing. They get to present it, and we display it, and it's, it's theirs and it's something they can be proud of. Another thing we do is every morning, we have a morning meeting, a campus-wide morning meeting, morning meeting, and we focus on our ROARs. And the O in ROAR is ownership. And it's, what does that look like? How do you own what you're doing? And how is it yours? So we're having those conversations daily, weekly, monthly with our campuses to focus in on that. Any questions about Pillar Two? Thank you.
Hello, I have Pillar Four. We chose to consider change on four-point-one and four-point-two through the elementaries for communities as partners and parents as partners. Again, like Jody said, our big focus was on other pillars or major change. So we're gonna look at building those community speakers, people who, who specialize in different areas in our community that we can build a bank of speakers so that anyone could, if you're looking for a specific topic, we have a list of individuals in our community to really partnership with the schools. As well as, we are working on establishing PTOs at the various campuses within our, within our elementaries. Four-point-two is also consider a change as parents as partners. We were so excited in January to open up our campuses to our parents coming back for lunches, but we also want to, to dive deeper in with parents as partners within the schools. We're encouraging parent volunteers to come in and help the teachers and student organizations, engagement activities in the evening, bringing, you know, families in for various activities now that we're open. And it's been nice that we can have parents back on campus. Four-point-three, we're maintaining students as citizens. Jody kinda touched on that a little bit with our ROARs. We really talk about what ROARs, respect, ownership, attitude, responsibility, and safety. And what does that look like, being a productive citizen? We have our Wildcat ambassadors, which serve as like a student council in elementary per se. And we really feed into them, and they take ownership on the campus and leadership roles. Our counselor goes in with guidance lessons, looking, again, looking at how we can partner with other organizations to really build the idea, the profile of what it looks like to be an engaged citizen. So again, in recap, we are considering change for four-point-one and four-point-two and maintaining four-point-three. Any questions on that?
All right, so I am Pillar Six. So this is working on physical, sorry, fiscal, fiscal and operational systems. So for six-point-one, which is higher effective personnel, we decided to mark that as maintained. We did an overhaul of our system on how we interviewed and selected teachers. And then also by the passing of the Vader, our pool has been much deeper for us to pull from over the last year or so. We had a lot more candidates that we were able to sift through and interview through. So we felt like that was already in a really good place, and we'll continue with, maintain that. Six-point-two, stakeholder understanding. We put that as to continue or consider a change there, just because we always know there's ways for us to better ourselves in terms of how we get our information out. But at this time, with the CBAS and the signaling and the opportunities that we're starting in terms of parents on committees and opening our campuses back up, we wanted to see how those things work over this next little bit, and then we can decide if there is definitely a change and what direction we need to go with that. The last one there is six-point-three, which is aligned resources. We marked that one as continue for now and consider a change. Of course, we look very closely at being very intentional about the money that we spend on our campuses. We're diligent about making sure we are looking at being responsible. Now, that was mentioned earlier in terms of, we do look at that tightly. What are we spending our money on? Does it directly relate back to what we need? And is that directly gonna impact the learning in the classroom? So those things we do have in place at this time always might potentially be a better way for us to do it, so we wanna keep that kind of on our focus. But at this time, we do feel like, and we do that, and especially, I know we'll talk about additional staff members. We're diligent about how we decide if we're gonna add people or not add people. So those things all fit under this particular pillar, so we feel like we're gonna continue for now and just see if there's a change needed in the near future.
All right. And so we're excited now that we have all seven pillars, key questions, benefits, and full signaling built out. And so it's been a lot of work. It's been embraced by all of us, and we're excited. We're, we're now incorporating that into just everything that we do, and it's part of our DNA, part of our culture. And so we're super excited about that and always. And always, never would miss an opportunity to thank our principals, Dr. Caldwell and so many others there involved in this and making this come to life. So any questions on C-BASS? Thank you. Hey, next, Mr. Carr is going to talk to us about staffing. All right, so staffing, again, directly correlates back to our two pillar six of our C-BASS, and so our resource allocation. So we've definitely taken our most systematic approach that we've ever taken to staffing, really taken a deep dive into it. Want to thank Brian Myers for really setting some parameters for us. There's a lot of positions, of course, we would just love to have, and so, but we want to be good stewards and be responsible with what we have. So with that, the additional growth that is forecast for next year will support an additional, approximately just 12 FTEs or full-time equipment. We've also been able to pull funding from our federal title programs and then also potential realized savings through a construction manager and absorbing the, right now, we have, with American Reading Company, we have a coach that evaluating the money spent there. We're looking to bring that in-house, and so some cost savings there. Between all of those things would bring us an additional 2.5 FTEs. So we're operating at 14 and a half positions, if you will, or FTEs for this upcoming, for next school year. So we went through each campus, the district, our special education services, and so at this time, we are, and just again, just as a reminder, this is just information only. This is our second look at this. We tighten this up, and then so our plan is to bring the final plan to you in March so that we can get those, get our positions approved. We have, within special education, we have an elementary self-contained teacher, an elementary behavior intervention class teacher, and then an elementary behavior paraprofessional. At the high school, we have two positions, one for the CTE center. We have a CTE receptionist, since that's going to become frontwards at the CTE center, we need someone there that will also assist Nikki Nix and then attendance clerk to help keep track of all attendance here at the high school. Middle school, we have a math teacher and need for a boys' coach. And then we have a seventh-grade technology teacher. So, and then that technology teacher, extremely beneficial in helping us bring down our class numbers and our extracurriculars and fine arts over at the middle school. Elementary, we anticipate needing three elementary teachers. We haven't defined those as which campus specifically. Now it's just generic growth, shows to support three additional elementary teachers. And then just depending on where that growth comes, we'll dictate where that teacher, those teachers would go. Serving across the district would be a literacy specialist. This is our American Reading Coach that we would be absorbing or bringing in-house, a construction manager to help oversee all of our construction projects, a federal and special programs coordinator. Dr. Caldwell currently tackles all of that, but with our growth, with everything that we're doing, the need for somebody, that's just, that's a big hat to wear. And so we are proposing a federal and special programs coordinator. And evaluating all of our data and looking at ESL, our English second, English language learners, we need continued help and support there. So we're proposing an ESL teacher. Our technology, we need additional help and support in our technology department to help support all of the growth, a district librarian. And then finally, this is where the half of an FTE comes in, is that we have paid 80% of our SROs salary with our two, we have two proposed SROs that we would be paying all of their salaries. So that's going from 80% to 100%. And so with those two SROs, the additional 20% on each of those equated to a half of a position there. So all of those positions listed, that's 14.5 FTEs. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you talked about the CT, the high school, the CTE receptionist and attendance clerk, you know, those combined are two-thirds, and then there's another one-third FTE for special ed. Is that, you're looking at that being all, that's one, or you're going to have a part-time special ed person?
So that's a paraprofessional? And so we base the FTE off of a teacher salary? And so looking, just comparing those salaries, it's about, it's approximately a third.
And then on the special education, it talks about an elementary self-contained teacher. Do we know what campus that would be on?
If we decide, it's at Pleasant Field.
Yeah, there was a position that we ended up collapsing this year, and so that's actually going to kind of come back and fill that, but it's at Pleasant Field.
And then I had a question on the, on the technology side, the support specialist, I know. Probably technology is pretty thin, but is that going to be like hardware support or software support, or both? Okay. That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. All right, we'll now move into the business portion of the meeting. First, we'll consider the consent agenda items, which is regular meeting minutes from January 23, 2023, district financial report, district tax report, district monthly investment cash report, the inter-local agreement, multi-region purchasing cooperative with Region 10 ESE for school year 2023, 2024, and the resolution designating February CTE education laws.
I make a motion to approve this.
I had a question for, sorry. I was looking at the interlocal agreement with the Region 10, and I was going to see, is there anything specific that we're using the Region 10 interlocal to order for the ISD that's not available through Region 11?
Region 11 doesn't actually have a purchasing co-op. So Region 10, it's a multi-region, so they use Region 10, Region 11, I think there's a lot of other regions they use. So Region 10 is basically the fiscal agency, the purchasing co-op. It has a free co-op to us so that we can purchase goods for mainly going to be food service items, milk and bread and products they use on a daily basis. That co-op is run by Region 10, but the fees are paid by the vendors. So the school districts don't have any extra costs associated with that. That is for Region 10.
So Region 11 doesn't have a dinner co-op?
That's correct.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Krista, second by Teri. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll consider adopting the TASB district policy update 120. All right, if only all policy updates were this easy. There's only four local policies. We'll probably have a larger one after the legislative session, but so you should have received the explanatory notes. You are just BBB local. So just for any, they write to eliminate any confusion, we are replacing the term position with a seat on the board, so you're no longer a position, you're a seat. So congratulations. CKC local, the other, one of the bigger ones in here, the, they maintained, we made changes, the board made changes back in October of last year around some board authorization for our Guardian program. The only real major change is here for this policy now is that our emergency operations plan includes a response to a train derailment met with Brian Hunt, and we're in good shape there. We have that, have that taken care of. And then just that our emergency operations plan is in place. And so that was superintendent's responsibility to include procedures for our security program or in the EOP. All right, FNG local, revisions or recommend here, just for clarification, this one clarifies how special education complaints are addressed, encompasses all instructional resource policies, and then reference the, I'm sorry, nevermind, that's all for FNG local, just clarified and kind of cleaned up that policy. And then lastly, FO local, that just clarifies when restraint may be used. So that physical restraint, the district may restrain a student with a disability to receive special education services only in accordance with the law. So that's obviously a last resort for their safety, for their wellbeing. So that's it. That is, that is the local policies for update 120.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the TASB district policy update 120 as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Teri, a second by Krista. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 7D will consider approving the 2024-2025 Godly ISD school calendar. So it's strange to hear that, it's strange to say it, but 2425, the 2425, so we're obviously a year ahead on this, and so we received good feedback that staying ahead and helping people plan, and not only for the district to plan, but for families to plan. And so ultimately, there are no significant changes to the calendar, the same structure, starting about the same time, ending about the same time, breaks are roughly the same time, but I will review it with you here. So we will have our staff development and service days at the very end of July and first of August, and then the first day of school in August of '24 is August the 7th. Then followed by our traditional September holiday for Labor Day, and then we have a professional development day on September 13. That is the end of the six weeks, which for our secondary, it's an important date because that's the first time eligibility is considered. So that's an important day to make sure we have everything done correctly. And then the first, first quarter would end October 4th with our fall break, and then the second quarter will begin October 15th. November is late, November, Thanksgiving is late in the year. It is the absolute last week of November, and then we would have staff development day coming back after Thanksgiving on December 2nd. And then one of our, one of the slight changes here, we will go, before Christmas break, we will go until Thursday, December 19th. Historically, we have had two half-days at the end of each semester. And it's just a little bit, kind of, through conversations, it's turned into a little bit, it's kind of just the way we've always done it and why, and what's the benefit? So speaking of benefit, talking with the principals, and also, you know, this was presented to our district improvement committee, and then those, all of those members that took that, after we first talked about this, and then went back and talked to teachers, they went and talked to people in their circles, and that really the benefit is not there to have two half-days at the end of the semester. So we've changed to now just one, one half day there. Then Christmas break, December 23rd through Friday, January 3rd, and then we have in-service to start the second semester, and then we'll have actually a really short week there. It was challenging to be out that entire week. We realized that's the week of the stock show, but we got as much benefit from that week as we possibly could, you know, while we have a lot of kids and staff members involved in that, the majority of, and some of the large projects are done earlier in the week. So we will start on Thursday, January 9th, and have a two-day week there. And then go through and staff development, we have, well, first of all, holiday in January for MLK Day. February 17th is President State, that will be a staff development day for us here, spring break, in its traditional spot in the quarter, and then begin the, begin the last quarter. Holiday and in-service in April, and then we end prior to Memorial Day on Thursday, May 22nd. So like I said, the structure is essentially the same, just minor tweaking of dates here and there and to put what we think is a good calendar together. The days remain the same, 169 instructional days and 18 staff development. Any questions? How's spring break partner with Martha's School of Hill College? Yes, so we're in line with, we're in line with our partners.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2425 Godly ISD school calendar as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Teri, a second by Krista. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. 7D will consider resolution to pay non-exempt employees for inclement weather days, Monday, January 30th, January 31st, February 1st, February 2nd, and February 3, 2023. So this is, wait a minute.
I mean, this is just a standard resolution to make sure all of our auxiliary people receive their treatment.
I have a question. Is this something we might need to consider as a policy instead of having to approve this as a resolution and every time it snows or gets freezing weather? I would think that if we have freezing weather and we're calling school off, that those staff that would normally be on hourly wage, we would go ahead and pay them regardless.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but something is telling me that, and I just need to do some research, because I'm not sure that that is a practice, that I'll do the research.
Yeah, you're thinking there's some reason why we can do it this way?
I know we've talked about it before, and I can't remember either why.
Yeah, we've had the discussion. I just, I need to do some more research.
All right, and you can check and report back if you're ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to pay non-exempt employees for inclement weather days, Monday, January 30th, 31st, 2023, February 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 2023, as presented. It would be Monday, would it? Oh, it was a half-day, sorry. Okay.
I'll second.
A motion by Krista, a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Seven E will consider and take action on the order calling of our election in the district on May sixth, twenty-twenty-three. So I wanted to, Audrey, just to quickly go through, I know we've been talking about this for several months now, but I want to go through it just one last time with the odd everything that's been recommended to us by our long-range facilities committee.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. So this is just gonna be a really brief summary of what we've talked about in the past as you prepare to make this decision. We did meet with the long-range facility planning committee again last week, and we shared with them the community survey results that were received. At the end of that meeting, they decided to confirm the recommendation that they had already given to you in December. At that point, it was an eight-hundred-eighty-five million dollar bond. There were a couple of placeholders that we've since gotten more information on for technology and safety and security that has brought it up to eight-hundred-eighty-nine, and that was presented to them as well, and they confirmed bringing this recommendation to you all. So again, just a quick summary of what is included in that cost. Try it. Okay, there we go. The recommendation includes three new elementary schools, one new middle school, Godley Middle School addition and renovation, Godley High School additions, which I'll expand on in just a second, and renovations at RB Godley and Legacy Elementary, so that those are equitable to all of the newer elementary schools. All of this combined adds five thousand ninety-five additional students. The last presentation, we had forgot to count the seventy-five fine arts students, so this was five thousand twenty, I think, last time you saw it, but no project scope has changed, we just updated the student count, so this gets to five thousand ninety-five students. To expand a little bit on the projects planned for the high school, it is an addition, there we go, classroom and sped addition for seven hundred students, fine arts addition that will provide additional space for art, dance, and theater for the seventy-five students, performing arts center for twelve hundred spectators, Ag Projects Center addition, Ag tennis locker rooms, another classroom, potentially CTE addition, athletics and stadium improvements addition, so this is, there we go, and then parking for the stadium as well. So that's the summary of those projects at Godley High School. And then with all of that growth, you need the additional infrastructure and support for those students, and so we're looking at how to improve traffic flow throughout the district, providing parking where needed. We mentioned safety and security upgrades. There are tornado shelters that are code required now for all your new facilities. The technology infrastructure, buses, transportation facility for those buses, a wastewater treatment plant if we're getting ahead of the city and utilities, we want funds in there for that. Converting the sixth grade campus for other district-wide needs, since that will no longer be a large enough campus to support a single-grade level, repurposing that, and then land purchases. So that is the summary of all of the projects included in the recommendation, and that will impact a variety of programs throughout the district. One, it will bring equity to all of your classrooms across the district, no matter the age of the campus, they will have the same technology, updated finishes, systems and equipments and everything like that. It will provide more opportunities for career and technology students, fine arts, Ag, and game of athletics. So it will touch pretty much everything in the district. So this was the recommendation that the committee gave last time, and they're asking you all to consider. This plan ensures that five thousand students that are expected within the next eight to ten years will have a, a classroom to go to. And then just as a reminder, your INS tax rate, the state has capped at fifty cents, you are already at that limit, and so by approving this bond election, if the committee, if the community then approves this bond election, their tax rate will not go up. This is funded purely by the growth of additional residents and additional businesses that come into the community. Any questions?
I have a quick question. It didn't look like there was a lot of athletic facilities included in this bond. Would you say those are ten percent or less of the total?
Yeah, definitely ten percent or less. The, probably the biggest one is adding another gym to the high school, which is typical once the high school reaches two thousand students, you'll see that in commonplace across high schools.
Thank you.
Mr. Metta was gonna go over just really quickly a little bit of the survey information again.
Good evening, trustees. I just want to tell you about the survey that we completed in December after the long-range committee completed its work. We went, we actually conducted two simultaneous surveys, one for families in the community and one for our employees, so that we could keep the data separate and still know both stakeholder groups, what their level of support or not was. And so we, we conducted a hybrid survey for parents in the community, which means that we, we did a combination of both a web survey as well as a traditional phone survey. And we were able to, well, there were several hundred that began the survey and answered some questions. There were two hundred and forty-eight verified respondents just to the family and community one, and that was certainly sufficient for a statistical representation of the community and for us to draw some conclusions. And so we asked about three levels of questions regarding the, the committee recommendation. First, the base recommendation, which was at the time a little over eight hundred million dollars, that includes most of what, what Audrey just went over. We asked separately about the fine arts performing arts center, because at the time we thought that it might have to be a standalone proposition. And thirdly, we asked about several other projects that the committee considered but did not include in its recommendation. And we asked about the level of support or opposition at the beginning of the survey, and then we provided a lot of explanation about all those, and then we asked again at the end of the survey, what the level of support or opposition was. And for the family and community survey, at the beginning of the survey, there was support of fifty-six point eight percent, and at the conclusion of the survey, the level of support was sixty-six point one percent. And just to give you an idea of the teacher and staff survey at both the beginning and the end of their survey, the support level was at eighty percent.
Any other questions for Mr. Metta? And it's important to remember that this, okay, go ahead, Craig. Yes, sir. For those of you who couldn't hear, Mr. Stevenson said that this is taking a different strategy that we got from feedback from our community, rather than pass more frequent bonds. This is a longer range plan, so we don't have to keep coming back to our community with bond after bond, and that's feedback that we did give from our community. So yes, sir, you are correct, Mr. Stevenson. Yes. And like Audrey said, it is important to remember that there is no tax rate increase. Our future growth will pay for this bond, and we won't be able to access much, if any, of the bond funds until the growth comes, but we won't need to access it until the growth comes, and that's the beauty of it. So it's the new houses that will pay for the facilities needed for growth, because this bond election is really quite simply just asking our community for approval to use the added fiscal capacity that these new houses will bring to us. We're simply asking the new growth to pay for facilities for the new growth. So that's why the committee has recommended this bond to you.
I'll make a motion to approve an order calling a bond election in the district on May sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and submitting to the voters of the district's school facilities proposition A in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-nine million dollars, as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Terry, a second by Krista. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number seven F, we will consider and take action on the board for calling a Godley ISD school board trustee election for two expiring terms on May sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Any explanation here other than this is we've got to order the election?
I make a motion to approve the order calling the Godley ISD school board trustee election for two expired terms on May sixth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Krista, a second by Terry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Seven G will consider joint election contracts with Hood, Johnson, and Tarrant Counties for the Godley ISD school board trustee election for expired terms on May sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Since we're in three counties, we have to enter into agreements with our three counties to have our election, that's what this is.
I make a motion to approve the joint election contract with Hood, Johnson, and Tarrant Counties for the Godley ISD school board trustee election, expired terms for May sixth, twenty-twenty-three, as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Krista, a second by Terry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. There is no meeting in the conversation.
I'll motion adjourned.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, being no objections. This meeting will stand adjourned at seven twenty-two P.M. Thank you everyone for coming.
Okay, what's the score of the basketball game?
Yeah, has he made a score, I think? Twenty-six, twelve? Forty-six, twelve. Good guys, okay? Ms. Nix, I really, really enjoyed those CTE pictures. I mean, some of those were like, some of those were like a ten out of ten, and I like, that's really good. I mean, unless you're, you know, chilling.